I'd like to call this village board meeting of June 28th, 2018, to order. Would the clerk please take the roll? President Jackson here. Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Meritato.
Here.
Trustee Pocic.
Here.
Trustee Schroeder.
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
(audience) A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
I don't want to surprise you too much, but trustee Schmidt.
Wow, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Join us Saturday, August 4th, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 AM to noon for Coffee with the Mayor and Village Board. Please note, there is no Coffee with the Mayor and Board in July. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Mayor or Village Board, please call the Mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Take your summer fun to the next level by attending Glendale Heights Fest, known as one of the western suburbs premiere events. Glendale Heights Fest runs Wednesday, July 11th through Sunday, July 15th, at Camera Park, 101 East Fullerton Avenue. Experience the North American Midway Entertainment Carnival, along with exciting entertainment, rides, and fantastic food booths. Enjoy a dazzling display of fireworks at DUST on Wednesday, July 11th, and again, Sunday, July 15th. Plant to spend five funful days at Glendale Heights Fest with delicious food and entertainment for the entire family. Be sure to like our Facebook page and stay up to date with important information about this year's Glendale Heights Fest. And visit our brand-new Glendale Heights Fest website at www.glandalehighsfest.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And Sharon, would you like Bill to read your first one?
I sure would.
Could you do Sharon's for her, please, Bill?
I certainly will.
Then I'll have Mike do the second.
Sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
From now until July 11th, one-day wristbands are only $20 to Glendale Heights Fest. Or take advantage of the Megapass, which is good for unlimited rides on all five days of Glendale Heights Fest, and only costs $70. Wristbands and Megapasses are non-transferable and non-refundable. Carnival wristbands are available for purchase at the Village Hall, the Center for Senior Citizens, and the Glendale Heights Sports Hub. Megapasses are only available for purchase at the Sports Hub. For added convenience, you can print your wristband vouchers at home. Avoid long lines and buy and print everything you need before heading to Glendale Heights Fest. For more information on Glendale Heights Fest, wristbands, Megapasses, and times for when wristbands and Megapasses are valid, please call (630) 260-6000. Visit www.glandalehighsfest.com, or like our Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Um, trustee, thank you. Trustee Light.
Awesome. Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Join us at your neighborhood park party for some great family fun and the opportunity to meet the mayor and your district trustee. Park parties are held from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM at various parks throughout Glendale Heights. Enjoy picnic-style dinner as you play games and dance along with the day camp staff. Check out Glendale Heights Police Vehicles and Glen Side or Bloomingdale Fire Protection District trucks. For more information on your park party, visit www.ghprf.com, or call (630) 260-6060. The Village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a variety of seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2O Aquatic Park, Public Works, Parks, Recreation, and Facilities Departments. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, to youth program counselors, and many others. Gain valuable experience and build friendships that will last a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit the Village's website, or contact Human Resources at (630) Summer is here, and it's time for some fun. Sign up today for PATH Summer Camp. Our theme this year is "Let's Explore." Each week campers will get their passports stamped and explore new cultures. We will learn about new music, sports, food, and more. PATH Summer Camp is one of the few camps around that also includes swimming lessons built right into the curriculum. Sign up today for a summer adventure. For more information, visit www.ghprf.com, or call (630) 260-6060.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Get your 2018, 2019 Village Vehicle sticker now. The new vehicle sticker must be displayed by 12:01 AM this Sunday, July 1st, 2018, on the lower right-hand corner of the windshield. Passenger vehicle stickers are $15. Motorcycle tags are $12. Recreational vehicle stickers are $18. And trucks with B-plates are $25. There's an additional price schedule for trucks based on their individual weights. Qualifying senior citizens receive one sticker per household at no charge. Village ordinance restricts overnight parking on village streets to those vehicles having a valid vehicle sticker. For more information regarding Village Vehicle stickers, call (630) 260-6000. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Meritato.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Yard waste curbside collections are made on your regular or holiday schedule pickup days by Republic Services. Our yard waste must be placed in bi-degradable paper bags or cans clearly labeled "Yard Waste Only." Bi-degradable paper bags or cans must not exceed 32 gallons in size and 50 pounds in weight. Brunch may be in bundles not exceeding four feet high, two feet diameter, and 50 pounds in weight. Please remember that all single-family and multifamily residential units are required to use Republic Services for the collections and disposal of refuse. When placing your refuse and recycling totes outside for collections, containers are to be placed at the outside... Containers are to be placed at the curbside immediate adjournment to the street without interfering or endangering the movement of vehicles. Please do not overfill your garbage or recycling bins. Register today for the 30th Annual Summer Scramble at Glendale Lakes Golf Club. The Summer Scramble tees off at Sunday, July 15th, with a 9:00 AM shotgun start. This fun summer golf outing will include breakfast, lunch, dinner, along with prizes awarded at the end of the day. The fee to register is $340 per four-person team. To register, call (30) 260-0018, or visit www.glandalelakes.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pocic.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
National Night Out Against Crime is celebrated annually on the first Tuesday in August by law enforcement agencies across the United States. The Glendale Heights Police Department invites you and your family to join them on Tuesday, August 7th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Village Campus, and show your support for crime and drug prevention in Glendale Heights. This free event is open to all residents and raises awareness about crime prevention in our community. The Glendale Heights Police Department has prepared an evening of fun featuring a police dunk tank, games, face painting, a visit from McGruff, the crime-fighting mascot, emergency apparatus demonstrations by the Glen Side and Bloomingdale Fire Protection Districts, free hot dogs, hamburgers, and more. For more information, contact Sergeant Kelly Derry at (630) 909-5445, or the police non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Trustee Schroeder.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Glendale Heights 2O Aquatic Center is your place to cool off during hot summer days. So stop by and learn about swim lessons, private pool rentals, membership, and more. Come and relax in the pool, dive in the deep well, or hang ten on the FlowRider. Regular season hours are Monday through Friday, from noon to 8:00 PM, and Saturdays and Sundays from noon to 7:00 PM. The Glendale Heights 2O Aquatic Center also offers private rentals for you and your friends. Private rentals are available in the evening and are flexible with water slides, diving boards, and the FlowRider. Inquire today about hosting your next outing at the Glendale Heights 2O Aquatic Center. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Um, next thing we have is a proclamation to proclaim the month of July as Park and Recreation Month. So if there are no objections, I will sign the proclamation?
None.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, I'd like to make an appointment to the Citizen Corps Council, and that would be for Lisa Knott, for representing Ameda Health Adventist Glen Oaks Hospital. Lisa will be replacing Jill Beteras, representing Ameda. So, um, a motion would be in order to concur. Trustee Pocic?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Welcome, Lisa. Thank you. Uh, next. I believe this is yours, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Board.
You're welcome.
Rhonda and Roger. Come up here. So tonight, we're here to recognize three of our most dedicated, long-serving officers on a well-deserved retirement. Being a police officer for as long as they have, and I'll get into their careers a little bit, takes true spirit, true dedication, true commitment to the community and the officers and everybody that's around here. And the three that we're going to recognize tonight have exemplified that in every way possible. Officer, by years of service, we're going by not right, Rhonda. Roger Knott, he's been here 34 years. Rhonda Kerstein, Sergeant, has been here 28 years. And Sergeant Mike Skopek, who's not here tonight, it's his birthday, he's out with his family. He's got 29 years of service. Collectively, the Police Department is losing 91 years of experience to the department. So the time and effort that each of these officers have put in cannot be replaced. It's going to take 30 more years to replace all the time, the experience that they've had. I am proud to, as they retire, to not only call them friend and colleague, but joining with the rest of everybody else that's in the back, fellow retiree, because there's a lot of them in the background here to support them, along with all of our officers. And there's a camaraderie with our retirees that's pretty cool. They are leaving here on their own accord. I told Roger, and I told Rhonda, and I threatened to rip up Rhonda's notice before she walked out, right? They can stay here as long as they want to stay here. And the best part of police work is when you can go out on your own terms to retire and be young enough to enjoy it, and put the time and effort in, and have the family unit in place that's going to help you be successful and stay healthy, and enjoy the rich rewards that you've earned from the time that you've put in. And I am sincerely proud to call them not only friends and colleagues, but members of the Police Department. They will be members of the Police Department for forever. So, Roger. I'll try and keep this as short as possible. I know we've got a big board meeting today, but Roger's last day is July 12th. Roger's been here 34 years. You wouldn't know it by looking at him, but he's been here that long. Roger is a policeman's policeman. Today, I heard him making traffic stops. So I know that somebody had to do something in front of him that just said, "Mm, I got to make this traffic stop." That never leaves you, even when you know that retirement is only a couple weeks away. Roger's spent most of his 34-year career as a patrol officer. He was assigned to Investigations Division from 1993 to 97. He was one of the first special operations detectives that we've had here for our gang unit back then. I was proud to serve with Roger during that time. We were there together. We did a lot of fun stuff, did a lot of cool things. Going through Roger's record, he's got 58 commendations. He's got three life-saving awards. Most importantly, though, I think, and I'll read one later, he's got 19 thank-you notes from citizens for stuff that he did that nobody really knew about. And they're actually pretty cool. During Roger's time in investigations, not only did we have a lot of fun, he was also the lead investigator in one of our more prominent homicides that we had back in the mid-'90s. Roger was the lead investigator for the arrest of Joseph Arietta. Joseph was a 17-year-old kid at the time who, during the course of a drug ripoff, committed a double murder. Through Roger's effort and work, and diligence, and time, Joseph got the only sentence he could get, which was natural life in prison for a 17-year-old kid. And he's still there. And he's...
Huh?
Yeah, but he's still there. And he's never given up. So that was a great case. Roger's been one of our primary ETs since, pretty much since he's been working. Processed more crime scenes than probably anybody of our other ETs put together. Was a primary ET for almost all of our major crime scenes. He's been a range officer and a primary instructor for tactics and keeping all of our new officers trained and tactically sound. I just have one word to say about Roger, and that's trust. And you know when Roger went to a call, it was going to be handled correctly. Whether it was a violent, in-progress call, you knew Roger was going to be there, be tactically sound, do the right thing, no matter what the issue was, it was going to be handled correctly. Two, a letter I read in his file from a pretty long time ago, citizen wrote a letter of thanks for Roger. And maybe some of our new guys don't know this side of Roger, but he's actually a pretty humble guy. Thank-you letter stated, "I want to thank Officer Knott for going above and beyond his duties to assist my wife, who was a wheelchair-bound resident. She was in her car, couldn't get out of her car. The wheelchair was in the car. Roger was able to pick her up out of the car, take the wheelchair out of the car, place her in the wheelchair, and they went on their way." Something that nobody sees that happens every day, that our officers are out there doing. And sometimes we know about it, sometimes we don't. We know about it when people write us letters, and we say a thank you, and then it kind of goes away. But that's the kind of stuff that we do every day. And whether you're a hardcore gang officer, or just an average street person, our officers are out there doing that, and officers throughout the country are out there doing that every day. So Roger, I'm going to sincerely miss you. Going to be a big loss, you not being here, from a variety of perspectives. So I wish you nothing but success in whatever it is you choose in the future, even if it's nothing, right? So, Rhonda, you know, we had a final walkout for her. She's on some benefit time. Her last day is actually July 9th. Rhonda is retiring after 28 years of service as a policeman, woman. She's got 30 years of service with the village. She spent two years as a dispatcher with the village prior to taking the test and becoming a police officer. Rhonda has had a very, I would say, an awesome career. Because you have done about everything in the Police Department that you could do. Rhonda was hired in 1990 as a patrol officer. She spent 10 years as a COP officer and school resource officer, and really set the standard for how our officers act in the schools, should act in the schools, and... She spent 10 years from 1996 to 2006 in the COP as a school resource officer, and to this day, she's still, nobody wants to walk at Summer Fest with her, because to this day, kids still come up to her and talk to her about being their school resource officer, which is the whole point of being the school resource officer. So, awesome stuff. She went back to patrol for a few years, and then in 2010, she got assigned to Investigations. So from COP to Investigations, and I was a supervisor in Investigations, and I was... Not very often I get sad when somebody gets promoted, because being promoted is the next step in your career, but Rhonda was a phenomenal detective. Phenomenal. And cared deeply about the victims that came across her desk, and went above and beyond in sacrificing her time, even her off-duty time, in taking these cases on. And I was just at a Neighborhood Watch meeting a couple months ago, and one of the victims that Rhonda helped out tremendously came up to me to just thank her again, because she hasn't seen you in a couple years. And just wanted to express her thanks and gratitude again for everything that Rhonda did. And in that case, we had a victim who was stabbed in a domestic violence incident, and the offender went out to Detroit. And Rhonda was tenacious, and actually got federal agencies involved, got states involved, got the city of Chicago involved to help us track this person down. And we did. And we were able to meet him at the bus stop in Chicago and arrest him. But I don't think I've ever, and I wrote this down in my notes, I don't think I've ever seen you take a lunch.[1452.15][1452.15](laughter) And I know I never did when you were an investigator. But in 2012, she got promoted to Sergeant. And she has been the go-to person for everything, and you've left a large void in the sergeantdom for people to take over, especially when it comes to the tracking of things, the review of things, the report review, and all the little stuff that a lot of us don't look at, Rhonda looks at. And that's going to be some hard shoes to fill. She's been a tireless worker. She's been successful in every position she's had. She's got tireless work ethic. She has compassion for the community, compassion for the residents, compassion for all the victims that came across her, and for all the citizens in the village, and genuine love for every person here, and especially the policemen that work for the village and the Police Department. And she genuinely cares about everybody, and that's hard to find. I've spent a lot of time with the Kersteins. We just promoted Ron on Tuesday, her husband, to Sergeant. My kids are the same age as her kids. We've been to, and they went to the same schools, the same high schools, and I've spent a lot of time with them, and I'm sincerely going to miss you, Rhonda. Your daily presence makes everything better. Throughout Rhonda's career, she's had 20 commendations, two Division Mayor and Terrace Awards, one life-saving award. When you get promoted a little bit earlier in your career than some of us, you tend not to get all the recognition, because you're handing them out more than you're receiving them. But Rhonda's career has been very rewarding for the Police Department, and hopefully it has been for her. We have for each of them... And a plaque. A plaque for 34 years of dedicated service to the Glendale Heights Police Department I think the mayor's got something for you, too.
Yes, you do.
Rhonda, I think you saw it. Same thing, Rhonda, first time retired 20 years. Your plaque for 28 years. The mayor has something for you, too, and if you guys want to say a few words, you're more than welcome to.
Well, they have my swag.
They have swag, right? I still do.
(laughter)
You know, my last day working, I said a lot, and I'm probably going to touch on some of the same things, so those of you who've already heard it. It has been a great career. My kids are here today. They grew up in Glendale Heights. They did Safety Town events when I was running Safety Town. When I did deer, we had, you know, cosmic bowling, and we did an overnight thing. So they got to be part of all that, the fishing derby. So they have great memories of the Police Department and of the village. And I'd probably say my time in the schools, though it seems like it was so far long ago, was, you know, probably the most touching part of my job. Because I did meet a lot of the kids, a lot of the residents. You know, I taught deer at third grade and at fifth grade, and then I had them again for grade at the middle school. So a lot of them I saw grew up over the years. So when I see them at Summer Fest, you know, the chief's right. Some of them do come up to me because I was involved with them for a long time, and I feel so fortunate to have been in the school unit for that long. And Mabbett, I believe, was chief at the time, and we are just starting the permanent school resource officer positions. So it's not typical that you're there for that long. So because we are trying to, you know, bring... So a lot of them I saw grew up over the years. So when I see them at Summerfest, you know, the chief's right. Some of them do come up to me because I was involved with them for a long time, and I feel so fortunate to have been in the school unit for that long. And Mabbett, I believe, was chief at the time, and we are just starting the permanent school resource officer positions. So it's not typical that you're there for that long. So because we were trying to, you know, bring in the new person, it was extended a little bit longer. But it was a great time. And I, that was probably the most touching part, but I'd say the funnest part for me, or the most memorable time for me, is the time I had on the road in patrol. And it seemed so short, because I went into the schools, you know, pretty quick, and spent some time in investigations. But I feel like I missed out a lot working with the patrol officers, and that really was my passion. That's where I found that I enjoyed myself the most. And these guys are a great group of people. They are like my second family. And I'm going to let Roger talk now.
Well, I don't have much to say, other than thank you very much for letting me be a police officer here for 34 years. Like Rhonda said, they're like having a second family, and I'm going to miss all of them. A lot of them are new. I mean, I got hired in 1984, and if you go down the list, there's people, we got more hired in 2002 than, or from 2002 to 1984 now, so. Turning it over to these guys and ladies, and hopefully they can carry on and do the right things and have the same fun we did. So, I'm going to make it nice and short.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, you guys, before you speak, rumor has it that you have volunteered along with all of our other retirees to be at Summerfest. Because I know how much the police department loves it.
So, just so you know, the person that you just voted on to be on the Assistant Court Council, is Roger's wife. All in the family tonight. But thank you, and sincerely from me and everybody that you've ever worked with and the lives you've touched, thank you for everything you guys have done. You are going to be missed in more ways than you can imagine, and it's great to see you guys retire with, on your own terms, and live a long, healthy life, and collect money for as long as you can. That's what it's all about. Thank you.
Yeah, in fact, we're going to recess to executive session.
Cake. We'll save you some.
I know.
Thanks, Jen.
Yeah. Would somebody like to make a motion? Trustee Sullivan.
A motion to recess to executive session.
To discuss.
To discuss, oh, I can't read that.
No, I can't either.
My, will you second?
I second it, yeah.
Can you read that for me, Bill? Bill, will you read it for me?
To discuss collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120/2C2.
Okay, I agree.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
We are recessed to executive session, and everybody can enjoy cake. And saying goodbye to two of our favorite people. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. We'll be back.
I'd like to call this village board meeting back to order. There was no action taken in executive session. Next on the agenda is public discussion on agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, you have the consent agenda before you. Trustee Schroder.
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved.
No, Mike.
No, I know.
Okay. There is no old business, new business. Number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business items number two through 12. Trustee Pocic.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, first reading is waived on new business items two through 12. Number two is an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises located at 325 East Army Trail Road, Unit 106, in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. That's May's Lounge. And first reading has been waived, so this is ordinance number 2018-39. Trustee Light.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-39 is approved. Number three is an ordinance to amend Title IV, Chapter III of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, and that is the liquor license for May's Lounge. First reading has been waived, so this is ordinance number 2018-40. Trustee Sullivan.
Motion to approve ordinance 2018-40.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-40 is approved. Number four is an ordinance to approve and authorize zoning variances for Freddy's Frozen Custard and Steak Burgers at 556 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading has been waived, so this is ordinance number 2018-41. Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Trustee Maritato.
Is there any way we can move them garbage cans in the back of building instead of the front of the building?
We looked at that extensively to try to find another location, but because of the way that the garbage trucks have to maneuver and the drive-through around the back, we couldn't find, in working with the engineer, we couldn't find a better location. It will be surrounded by a brick enclosure to try to improve the appearance.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-41 is approved. Number two, and number five, an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit a restaurant with drive-through facility located at 556 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is Freddy's Frozen Custard and Steak Burgers. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2018-42. Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-42 is approved. Number six, an ordinance to approve and authorize zoning variations for DuPage Jeep at 435 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2018-43. Trustee Schroder.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-43 is approved. Number seven, an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit the operation of an open sales lot with ancillary automobile laundry, and to permit an automobile repair shop located at 435 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading has been waived. This is ordinance number 2018-44. Trustee Light.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-44 is approved. Number eight, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the redevelopment agreement by and between John K. and the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois. This first reading has been waived. This is ordinance 2018-45. Trustee Pocic.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-45 is approved. Number nine, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of the redevelopment agreement by and between JSBM LLC, DuPage Dads Chrysler Jeep Incorporated, and the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading has been waived. This would be ordinance number 2018-46. Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-46 is approved. Number 10, an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus personal property owned by the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, John Deere tractor. First reading's been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2018-47. Trustee Sullivan.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-47 is approved. Number 11, an ordinance to approve and authorize signed variances for Self-Storage World at 325 East Army Trail Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2018-48. Trustee Pocic.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-48 is approved. Number 12, an ordinance amending Article E entitled Automated Traffic Law Enforcement System of Chapter III entitled Enforcement of Regulations of Title VII entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2018-49. Trustee Light.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-49 is approved. Number 13, a resolution of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois agreeing to indemnify the State of Illinois for photo enforcement equipment attached to IDOT facilities. This would be Resolution 2018-R-39. Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-R-39 is approved. Number 14, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights and Red Speed, Illinois LLC for an automated traffic law enforcement system and for violation processing services in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This would be resolution number 2018-R-40. Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Trustee Pocic.
Chief, I have a question. This was brought up last night at the Neighborhood Watch. This is strictly for east-west traffic, right? Not north and south?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-R-40 is approved. Number five, a motion to authorize the finance director to process accounts payable for July 5th and July 19th, including contract pay requests, to be ratified on August 2nd, Trustee Sullivan.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocic?
Yes.
Motion is approved. We have no committee of the whole, correct?
Correct.
So therefore, we're back to public discussion of agenda items, but since there is no committee of the whole, anybody in the public that wishes to address this board on any item, please step forward. Being none, Trustee Pocic.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.